First of all, can I just say, it's a real privilege to be here. I think this is the third year, actually, I've come. And each year, we meet new friends and we meet old friends. And seeing how people have progressed along their lean journey is always fascinating. And also, for me, it's always fascinating to see how, whatever sector people come from, whether it's a very hardcore engineering background or a service sector, we face similar challenges and similar problems, really. And actually, some of the solutions are similar as well, really. So, actually, my first story, and I'm going to tell you a few stories, because that's the way I like to do this, really. And the first story is for you, Peter, actually. And it was when I was nine years old and I was flying to Germany on Lufthansa. And I couldn't sit with my mum and my little sister because the plane was full. So I sat next to, actually, a pilot, a Lufthansa pilot, who was flying back with his family, actually, in the cabin. And while we were in the flight, a stewardess walked by, and I was on the aisle seat, and I was nine years old. And the stewardess thought I'd tripped her up. Well, I hadn't, but anyway, this stewardess, at least, I maintain that I didn't trip her up. But she rounded on me and started giving me a really good telling off. And the pilot, the captain, who was sat next to me, said, "Just remember, this young man is our customer." And, you know, that's what it's all about, we are customers. And actually, he got me to get, or he got the stewardess to go up to the flight deck. And in those days, you could go onto the flight deck. And I got a kind of a half hour on the flight deck as a result of that. So I thought that's really good customer service from Lufthansa. So thank you, Peter. Okay. I started my career, actually, as a teacher. And now, when people ask me, "What do I do as Director of Business Transformation?", I try and avoid answering that question. I say, "Well, actually, what I try and do is teach my organisation lean." And as part of that, I try and develop a few stories and a few little things that we do with people when we're teaching them about lean in our organisation. And I just want to try a couple out on you. So some people who were here last year will have heard Mike Rother speak. And he did a really fascinating piece on lean thinking, about the importance of thinking and the importance of how people think in terms of cultural change. Okay, so some people, I think, have already done this, actually. But I'm going to ask you all to do it. And if you've seen it before, just play along and don't give the game away. Could I ask you all just to fold your arms? Okay? Good. Now fold them the other way. Right. You haven't got mics, but I guess some of you, and I can see some of you, right, found it harder to fold them the other way. And the point of that is that doing things the way we always do them is simple. Doing things a different way, you actually have to stop and think. And the more you do that, actually, the better you get at it and you become practised at it, and it becomes second nature. And that is what lean thinking is all about. Our job, I think, is to train people to think and to think differently. So one of the other stories that I, or one of the other little techniques I use, which is my own, it's not Mike Rother's, so it won't be as good, is I say, "Imagine we're going to kind of open a new clothing shop or a new clothing chain. And, you know, we're going to aim at the mass market. So what we're going to do is we're only going to stock clothes for average people." And so what I'm going to ask you to do is, if you're a man and you're five foot nine, would you put your hand up, please? One, two. That's the average height of men. And five foot four and a half for women, hands up, any? One? Okay, ah, two. So, right, okay. So we've just designed this new clothing chain for average people. And there was only 10 people in this audience who would be able to shop there. Hmm. So there's a problem when we design stuff for average people. When we design things to be average, it doesn't actually suit very many people. And of course, what do we do in all our services, nearly all our services, maybe all of our services, is we actually design things for the average person or everybody gets the same service. In fact, actually, lots of places we'll talk to in our business, and they'll say, "Actually, we have to do exactly the same for everyone. If we don't do it exactly the same for everyone, that's not fair. People aren't being treated fairly." So one of the things at the moment, in addition to that job, I'm also acting director of children's services. And so one of the things we do a lot of in children's services is we do a lot of assessments of children to see what their needs are. Now, the trouble is that some of those children have really, really complex needs and require a really detailed assessment. But others, actually, we pretty much know what they need and it's pretty obvious what they need. And it really doesn't require a very difficult assessment. But because we design for the average or we design for one size fit all, everybody goes through the same process. So, and we're looking at this moment, and so before we did some work there, if you needed what we call a statement of special educational needs, which says what services you're going to get, it took at least 21 weeks to go through that process because everybody went through that process. By taking out those people who are a lot easier, we can get through that process in six weeks. And if you're a child and you need help, the difference between six weeks and 21 weeks is quite some difference, actually. But also, there's some real cultural issues that we have to deal with. Because I took some colleagues from the whole of the West Midlands, actually, who worked in special educational needs through a presentation about that. And I said, "You know, the way we do this is we use lean, we focus on the customer." And some educational psychologists put their hands up at the end and they said, "You're immoral, just giving customers what they want." Okay. Right. Just lost my glasses now. Okay, so we're going to talk about lean in local government. But actually, I also want to talk about lean in the public sector because most of the things that we do are integrated. So we need to understand what's going on in health, we need to understand what's going on in police. And the stories that I'll tell and the stories that Kim will tell will talk about how we need to kind of bring those things together because that's where the real gains are in terms of lean in the public sector. So inevitably, you have to get a little bit about Solihull. If you don't know where we are, we're situated between Birmingham and Coventry. Birmingham Airport is actually in Solihull. The NEC is actually in Solihull. And Land Rover is based in Solihull. And at the top northern part, Castle Bromwich, is Jaguar, actually. The actual plant is just over the other side of the road, so technically, it's in Birmingham. But they always describe it as Jaguar Castle Bromwich, so we can claim that as part of ours. So we're very much part of, you know, the economic centre, actually, of the West Midlands economy. In fact, we're the fastest growing part of the West Midlands economy. We hope that we'll be getting high speed too, as long as the people in Warwickshire let it go through and we can dig up their gardens. And they'll be, the first, the first stop will actually be actually at Birmingham International. And that'll be the stop on the line. So there's tremendous opportunities for growth. And we've done some work and we think there's a potential, not just in Solihull, but in that sort of kind of broad area around the M42 of something like 100,000 new jobs being created in the next 10 to 20 years. So it's quite a vibrant place. But also, also, and I guess some people that know Solihull often think of it as the posh suburb of Birmingham. But actually, if you go north of the A45, which is that road that runs by the airport, if you live north of that road, you're likely to die seven to 10 years sooner than if you live south of that road as well. So it is a borough of contrast. We've got a budget of 150 million. Five years ago, that budget was 200 million. We've achieved those reductions without announcing any major programmes of redundancies, like you've seen in other organisations in the public sector. And our lean work has contributed to be able to manage that reduction. We've probably got another 30 or 40 million to go over the next three years as well. So we've got a declining resource base. So doing things differently is our burning platform. A number of colleagues have shown a similar slide here, Process, People and Purpose. Our journey started back in about 2006 with our first Lean Kaizen event. Almost inevitably, I guess, we started our lean journey looking at process. And this little clip from the politics show talks about that.
"Your Toyota is my Toyota," says the slogan of the Japanese car giant just outside Burton upon Trent. "But are your working methods my working methods?" Ministers never tire of urging public organisations to take a leaf out of the book of top companies like Toyota in their drive for business efficiency. Now, John Lewis-style cooperatives have been added to the list of big ideas as well. Our reporter, Susanna Mendonsa, joins us now live from the Touchwood Shopping Centre in Solihull. Susanna, are business principles catching on over there?
Well, they've been catching on for a while here, Patrick. No plans as yet to put the John Lewis model into action, although it is the main shopping store here at the Touchwood Shopping Centre. And so councillors wouldn't have far to go if they did want to see how things work there. But what councillors here have been doing is that they've been using techniques used within the Japanese car industry, something called the lean principle. They first used it in the way that they recruited foster carers back in 2006. They found that it worked for them. And so they've been rolling it out over the last 18 months across a range of departments. And they've so far saved something in the region of two and a quarter million pounds in those 18 months alone. And considering the current climate, finding new ways to save money really is the name of the game.
Taking a lean approach. It's a task the public sector faces in this age of austerity and one that's long been addressed on this production line at Bermondsey near Burton-on-Trent. She's pulled what's known as the Andon cord. It's come to symbolise the lean process, first rolled out by Toyota, now copied across industry.
It's about efficiency because it's an early warning sign to a team leader that I have a concern or a problem. So it allows that problem to be solved immediately rather than it going to the end of the line and then being solved there.
Leaner and more efficient. They're both familiar concepts in the car industry and they're now buzzwords for what the government wants to see from local authorities. And some councils in the Midlands are looking to what goes on in factories like this one for the answer. And managers here at Toyota say the techniques can be transferred to the public sector.
The lean process is about the elimination of waste. That's anything that adds cost but no value. I think any organisation, including councils, has a customer and they have a process. And within every process, I'm sure we can find ways. So I think it's completely applicable.
It's applicable here in Solihull, where it's been rolled out across a range of departments, including the one responsible for putting yellow lines in. The process used to be a laborious one.
The process before, it took 153 steps. It took eight months for us to introduce a traffic regulation order, which is for things like yellow lines. We've gone through the lean review and we're now looking at a process that is 49 steps. And we expect that we can introduce a traffic regulation order in around 90 days.
The sticky labels represent each of those steps. And fewer steps hasn't just saved time, it's also saved the council more than 80,000 pounds from what it used to spend on issuing traffic regulation orders.
I think each council's got to find its own way. But here in Solihull, we're absolutely committed to using lean. We're rolling it through the organisation. We're making all our staff aware of the benefits. And we think that's one of the best ways we can respond to the real challenge that the public sector faces. But all the time, we are trying to avoid cutting services using this technique.
With councils facing cuts to their government funding of more than 7% year on year for the next four, finding ways to save money is crucial.
The government says it isn't being prescriptive about how local authorities like Solihull should achieve that. But at the Tory Party Conference in Birmingham last month, the Secretary of State for Communities and Local Government, Eric Pickles, said he wouldn't forgive councils that don't cut all the waste before squeezing services. And in the last week, the government's called on public sector workers to adopt the cooperative model in place here at John Lewis and take over the running of local services themselves, so long as they save money and keep up quality at the same time.
With the season for giving fast approaching, councils are being told to do more for less. The question is whether finding new ways to tighten their belts may squeeze them too much.
Okay, so we're very pleased with ourselves. We'd saved some money, we'd done some process reviews, and we got on the telly. Job done. But actually, yeah, in fact, we were very smug. And then Alec from National Audit Office came up and we met him here. And he kind of, they've got a kind of quite a good system of actually looking at how well your organisation's doing at lean. And Alec and his colleagues did that for us. And hmm, we thought maybe we've got a few things we've still got to learn, really. And actually, you know, one of the biggest things was that actually, whilst we were, we were chasing the money, because we had to chase the money, what we weren't doing was making lean stick. So that actually, we could go back and look at places where we'd done quite a lot of work, we'd done Kaizen reviews, and people had actually slipped back and they'd kind of moved back from new processes. And so lean wasn't sticking. And we had some, we did some thinking about this, really. And really, we kind of synthesised some of the thinking, some of the learning we got from here, from talking to other people, talking to people like Zoe Radnor, who's done a lot of work in public sector lead. And I think really reached the conclusion that actually, what we needed for our lean journey was to think about purpose and to think about people and to think about culture. And really, since last year, two years, really, we've been doing much more work on that now. And we've inevitably come up with something that we call the Solihull Way. And actually, that's now really our organisational development strategy. So lean has moved or is in the process of moving from really a series of process reviews into an organisational development strategy. We, I mean, it is well supported in the organisation. And the next short clip is Mark Rogers, who's the Chief Exec, really explaining actually how he sees lean and how he sees lean as actually a cultural tool within the organisation.
Hello, I'm Mark Rogers and I'm the Chief Exec at the council. I want to say two things about lean. First of all, I want to talk about why we use lean in Solihull. And secondly, clearly, I want to talk about the benefits. So why do we use it? Well, obviously, it's important to have a transformation methodology in your organisation. But lean absolutely suits us down to the ground because first and foremost, it's about customer value. And that's the one thing that we put first in our business, the customer. In terms of the benefits of it, well, I think the most important benefit is the cultural one. We have seen people slowly but surely develop a deeper and more substantial understanding of what it means to put the customer first. And that fits perfectly with the way we talk about our customers here, which is we want to put their lives before our services.
Okay, so a couple more stories from me before I hand over to Kim. First story, excuse me, I'm, my voice is, actually, I had lost my voice completely. It has come back now, but I still kind of go into deep soul singer mode occasionally and get a bit croaky. First story is about a flat tyre. Okay, so I was on one of my gember walks. I was accompanying a social worker. We were looking at the process of what happens to people, older people, when they come out of hospital and how we can help people, stay in their own homes longer. So I went with a social worker to visit an elderly woman. And we were looking at what services she needed to help her stay in her home. When we went there, we had a conversation with her. We said, "What sort of things do you need help with? You know, how do you get your shopping and things like that?" And the first thing she said, and she was very clear about, was actually, she's got an electric mobility scooter, but the tyres were flat. So she said, "I need to have the tyres in my mobility scooter pumped up." Right, okay, fine. And then she said, "The other thing is, I've got a laptop computer. I have done some shopping online. And I'd like, now winter's coming, to be able to order my groceries online. But I've lost confidence in how to use the computer. So I'd like someone to help me use the computer." And then the third thing that she said was that actually, the speakers on her television set were not working properly. She'd got a surround sound system, but she didn't know how to plug it in. But she did know that if she could plug her surround sound system in, that would solve the problem of the speakers on her television not working. This was 3 o'clock in the afternoon when we went to see this lady. She was dressed, the house was clean, she'd fed herself. Now, our re-enablement service provides support, helping people get dressed, helping people have their meals and things like that. So eventually, we persuaded her that was the service we needed. But what we didn't do was leave her with a way of pumping up her tyres, learning how to use the computer or plugging in her surround sound system. And actually, I know that in that area that she lived, there was a very active community group. And I know that that community group would have solved those problems for her. So I know that actually, we put in a very expensive service, which actually wasn't what she asked for, although we managed to persuade her it was what she wanted. And actually, so we could have done most of that for nothing, okay? Now, now, there's some exaggeration in there to make the point because actually, she'd got some benefit from the service. But Mark used that phrase, "lives, not services." We were thinking about what it was we deliver, the service we deliver, rather than what we needed to actually meet the need of the customer. So next story is about a wheelie bin. And one of the projects I'm involved in nationally is called Troubled Families. And it's how you actually look at some of the families in an area that are causing the most issues, really, to the police, social services, health, and so on. And, you know, we, it's kind of blindly obvious, realise, but when you look at some of these families, they may have 20 or 30 different professionals going in to support that one family. And they'll all be going in to deal with one thing. So the police might be turning up to deal with antisocial behaviour. We might be sending someone in because one of the children isn't attending school. Someone from health might be going in because there's a drug and alcohol problem. And the list goes on and on and on, and it grows. But all those interventions are about single issues. And so what we're trying to do is actually think how we can intervene around the family as a whole. And actually, reduce those numbers of professionals going in and actually have a plan for the family as a whole that looks at the family's issues as a whole rather than all those issues separately by whole groups of professionals. So the police will go in, or what used to happen, the police will go in, stop the antisocial behaviour, that's it, job done. Off they go, tick the box, that's fine. Actually, nothing changed because next night, with this family, they were out of gate. The biggest calls of antisocial behaviour, callouts for this family, was that they were throwing their rubbish in their own garden, they were throwing their rubbish in their neighbour's garden, and they were throwing the rubbish in the street. So in an act of sheer brilliance, one of our workers decided what they needed was an extra wheelie bin. Right, okay, so you think it's easy. Now, of course, the trouble is, you have to apply to get a second wheelie bin. And our job is to stop people sending waste to landfill because that costs us money and it's bad for the environment. So the process for getting a second wheelie bin is harder than applying for income support. I kid you not, it's a lot, it's a lot, it's a longer set of, and then when you've applied, you have to then go on a recycling awareness training course. So I didn't quite think this family was ready to go on a recycle. So the guys in Wasting Recycling did me a really big favour and we got that family another bin. And they didn't have to fill out a form. I think I got someone to fill it out for them, actually. And, and they got their bin and they didn't go on the Wasting Recycling training. As a result of that, the police callouts have dropped right away. Wasting Recycling guys said that they, like, before that, they were spending 4,000 pounds or they'd spent 4,000 pounds sending people out to clear the mess up in other people's gardens and so on. So all that money was saved by the provision of an extra wheelie bin at the cost of either 125 pounds or something like that, whatever, whatever it costs. And so, you know, that, again, is an example of thinking about lives, not services. But there's another interesting point there from what was said yesterday about how we account for money when we're thinking about lean. Because we'll have a devil's own job trying to prove that the way we're doing it is actually, you know, how do we kind of, we know that it's saving money, but it's saving money in different parts of the system. So it saved the police money, it saved another director in the council money, right? But actually, how do you sustain that project when actually the savings are dispersed all around the system in different departments and different? So we need to think about how we achieve the savings here and how we calculate that. So those two stories really brought us to the, our thinking about purpose. And we are doing something at the moment, so the leadership in our organisation is doing something at the moment which we're calling teachable point of view. So we're going out, we're telling our own stories throughout the organisation about what we want to happen. And so my colleagues are, have got their own stories. They can, they'd be slightly different from mine, but they'd be similar. And they'd be talking to groups of staff about those stories, their teachable point of view. It's interesting because some of my colleagues in the corporate leadership team say, "Where do you get these stories?" She says, "You've always got stories." Well, I didn't say, "Oh, well, I just make them up." Actually, I said, "No, go on a gember walk. If you go on your gember walk, you will find your stories." Because that's where my stories come from, by going out and seeing. So we've got that programme where leaders are now going out to talk to people. Those two slogans, "Good to Great" and "Lives, Not Services", there's actually quite a lot of thinking behind that. They sound like slogans. But the "Good to Great", that's actually, we have a conversation with people about, actually, we are a good council by most of the sort of people that come and inspect us. Let's say we're okay, we're doing quite well. But actually, the measures that we get measured by are often the wrong measures. So for example, I was talking to the woman that's responsible for potholes. She doesn't actually go and make the potholes, but she's meant to kind of clear them up. But, but, but she is measured by how quickly those potholes are filled in. And I was explaining to her, "Well, that's good, but great is not having potholes in the first place." And the "Lives, Not Services", actually, the one thing that we do as a council, actually, that unifies us all is that our job is to improve people's lives. So actually, it doesn't matter whether you're actually working very directly with people in children's services or adult social care. You know, if you're in a library, the reason we have libraries is not because we like storing books. We have libraries because libraries were there to help improve people's lives. Now, it's interesting, actually, to have the discussion with librarians is that whilst that was the optimal way to design a system in 1870 for providing information to people, would you still come up with the same answer of a library if you did it today? So, you know, the purpose conversation might have a bit of relevance and bite for them. But for all of us that work for Solihull, our primary job is about improving people's lives. And I think that goes really for everyone that works in the organisation. And then we want people to think not just about how do they improve people's lives or rather, not just about the services they deliver, but actually, what's the real outcome? What's the real purpose of what they're going to do? So I'm going to hand over to Kim now, and she'll say a bit more about some of that cultural journey.
So kind of, my job's to be a bit challenging, with respect to my colleagues, but to ask why a lot. And that's really the biggest challenge for me, is bringing some of those people with us that really don't think that this is going to work for them and lean's a thing. So what was, as Phil's spoken about, he's explained about our journey. And a couple of years ago, we realised that, you know, we've done quite a lot around improvement, but now we really need to make it stick. How do you get the people in the organisation to just think, "This is the way we do things around here"? So we used policy deployment to be very specific about what we need to do over three years to make the culture the culture of our organisation. to make the culture, the culture we're looking for in terms of the way we do things around here. It's lean, it's the way we do it. Using tools that we've got and available to people with a group of people that are really, really developed their knowledge and understanding of lean, but starting to move away, if I'm being honest, from using the word lean within all of the areas that we go to. Because, I'm going to be honest, social workers don't like it very much. But we know that the tools and the techniques that we're using are absolutely fundamentally lean tools. So we used policy deployment to really challenge ourselves to think, what do we need to do to make the change in our culture? And it's a tough area, isn't it, to really think that you need to move in? So, we've got to tell the organisation, this is the journey. What we wanted to do was take our policy deployment strategy and create a picture that we could tell the story to the organisation with. So this is our pictorial version of our matrix. And it describes the journey that we want to take people on in order for this to become a lean culture. We then developed a level two matrix and we've got a picture for that. So each of our tactics, this is what we're doing this year, absolutely this year. And we hold ourselves to account to make sure that colleagues and everybody that's involved in this across the organisation do what they need to do to make this happen. And it's led from the top. So, we really need to understand what the customer values. And that's different in different areas. And as Phil's explained, with some customers and some people, they don't want our services, they don't want you to take their kids away. So customers in the public sector are very different to the customers who are coming in to buy a product. So you've got to think quite differently about the way you do that. But in one of our areas, I'm going to let you hear a little from one of our colleagues in the wheelchair service.
I'm the Service Manager for Community Equipment and Wheelchair Services, which are provided by Adult Social Care in Solihull in the West Midlands. We provide items of equipment to assist people maintain their independence, recover from illness, add their rehabilitation and sometimes to support end-of-life care. We had a lean review undertaken on the services through October's December 2011. It was a relatively new concept to us. But the review actually came at an opportune time because we were facing stiff competition from independent service providers with our business transformation team. We began by deciding on what we wanted to achieve, what was the outcome of the review. And this was to establish a focus on adding value to the clients, delivering the right solution to them the first time, eliminating wasting what we did and making it an all-round better experience for the clients, particularly as most of them found themselves in either a vulnerable or indeed a crisis situation. And it's vital that staff are fully engaged and can contribute to the lean review process. I mean, what we found was most of the good ideas and positive thinking actually came from the people who undertook the jobs. This led to a better understanding of how their role and their tasks fitted in within the overall pathway. And it also enabled them to understand the work of their colleagues better. And that certainly helped in actually sort of looking at and compressing the time that we spent as individuals doing our own individual tasks. As a result of our lean review, we were successful in reducing our unit costs in line with the independent market leader. We also managed to improve our performance by over 12%, reaching an incredible 95% against the national performance indicator. It wasn't about making staff work harder, but smarter. The best testament I can give to our lean experience is the ownership that the staff now have of the performance of the services. They take a great pride in achieving and maintaining a high level of performance, which we've continued to do since the review. And of course, the positive feedback that we get from clients and other service users. Go along, Wayne, in helping us maintain that.
And so, some of our other tactics, we're looking at the employee journey. So the employee is a customer of the council. And we're looking, and it's a passion of mine because this is a piece of work that I'm leading, is to look at, you know, what does it mean to work in the organisation? And are we really growing people who actually work in the Solihull Way? And so we're putting some challenge into every step of that process, that value stream for our employees. So for example, I'm talking to our Head of HR and I suggested to him that what we need to do is take all of our policies and procedures in our bureaucratic organisation and just forget that we'd got them. And just let's have a think about what the possibilities are. And he said yes, as he sat there talking to me. And as he walked out the door, he just looked round the door and went, not all of them. So I've got a bit of a way to go as to whether, you know, he's really going to take on that challenge. But the idea about the future is to really drive that change for the future. We've got to think differently and creatively about the way people work in the organisation and how they're employed. So, we've got a new induction programme and we're thinking differently about the way people are brought into the organisation so they understand what their responsibilities are. Visible leadership is absolutely key. It's been, I want to be honest, you know, it's my job to get the Gember programme in place within the organisation. And it's been a challenge, but we've managed to get directors and heads of service out into the business. And we've had to really work hard to make sure that they didn't think they were going out to shake hands and kiss babies, that they were actually going to go out and understand the business and really see the detail of the process in order to come back and then find solutions together with their teams, completely different to the way they usually work. You know, strategy and sit at a table talking about, you know, the long-term future of the council is very different to understanding what's going on in the business. So we've been really working hard with that programme and we're continuing it. And leading by example links to that. Leading by example is so important that all of us within the leadership team actually demonstrate the behaviours we expect others to have. And that's a challenge because we're having to really question each other about what we're doing and how we work. We've got think tanks, we've created opportunities for people to really problem solve. Coming to a room and think about the problem they've got, we've got the tools, techniques. And what we've, what we're having is a programme across the business where people in their specific teams start to think about what does the Solihull Way mean for them. And we've worked with a group of people within a support service for adult social care. And they do all the financial arrangements for the teams. We got them together to really think about who their customer is and think about how are they really contributing to the life of that person at the end of the process? Because they're in the middle of the council, they don't see the customers very often. We wanted them to really think differently about their responsibilities and how they worked. And that's been a huge success. And they've done lots of things like go out to see their customers, go and see their internal customers, 5S, agile working. They now have their visible management, so you can go into their service. And they also thought about what's their purpose? What are we here and why do we exist? And over the next couple of years, every single team in the organisation's going to go through that process. And we don't leave it there, we go back and ask them how they're doing, just to make sure that it's sticking. So this is our kinds of, what we've learnt is, you can't just leave people and not go back and find out how they're getting on. So what we're doing is having a programme to kind of continually ask people how you're doing. And we're also developing an organisational coaching strategy. Because what we want to do is coach for success. We want to coach our inspirational leaders and help them to help us get the message across into the business. And so ultimately, this strategy is to help people behave in a way that they absolutely know why they work for the council. They work for the council to help people live their lives. And so, we've got a whole heap of work going on with some, with reviews in lots of different areas across the council. And a very big area that we've been working in is adult social care. There's an example where we were working with hospitals and our social work colleagues across the piece because we have, probably healthcare colleagues will know about this, but there's a lot, there was bed blocking, as it was called, where people were not getting out of hospital because of things happening within the system. So what we did was we got everybody from both sides of the equation, from health service and from the local authority, all the social workers in a room to really talk about what the problems were and what did we need to do? Because they had what was called section twos and section fives. And that's really demonstrates where a performance measure definitely drives the wrong behaviour. And we had a group of people arguing and fighting with each other because it was somebody else's fault as to why that customer, the customer, the person that's in hospital, was not getting home quick enough. So what we agreed to do together was we weren't going to use section twos and section fives anymore. And we were going to bring people together to have a relationship so that they could talk about how do we best get this person home, which was what they wanted. So we're constantly working with people from a lot of different organisations, looking at alternative opportunities for our customer. But that takes a different kind of relationship from the one that used to be our silo approach. And so, in all of the areas that we're working, ultimately, what underpins that is you've got to have the right behaviour and the right way of thinking in order to really make a difference, to be great, but to make a difference to our customers' lives.